Good evening. Welcome to Elkin High School, home of the Buckingham Hills. We're proud to be here tonight. We've ventured out this fine sunshiny day. First of all, we'd like to thank a few people that helped get this set up. Britt and Amanda, Elkins I D I T Department, appreciate you. Along with Martha Jo Brannall, County I T Department. Sandy Andrew, Chris for getting it all set up here. And Rachel Creasy, CFO of Elkin. Allison White, Julie Sabers fed us from Mazini's tonight. Awesome. Appreciate y'all for doing that. Last but not least, Dr. Steve Hall Superintendent of Elkin City Schools. We appreciate you for asking us out tonight. Hopefully we won't keep you here all night. But welcome to the April 7th, 2025 meeting of the Surrey County Board of Commissioners. After all that I've said and done, we will now have our invocation and pledge, Mr. Bill Goins.
Please stand. Dear Lord, as we come to you this evening, Father, we thank you for your grace and for your mercy. Father, we thank you for the life-giving rain that you've sent our way. Father, we pray for all those who are attendance. We're thankful for them being here. Father, we just pray that you be with them as they go home and they'll travel safely. Father, we just pray that you'll be with us tonight as we do the business of the citizens of Surrey County, that we might do what's pleasing in your sight. Father, we pray for all those who stand and protect us foreign and abroad. Just pray that you'd be with them, build a hedge of protection around them. Father, in all things, we'll give you the praise and honor of glory. For it's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Goins, and I wouldn't be remiss if I didn't, if I had left out Amanda Burton, Principal of Elkin High School. Amanda, thank you for having us over here tonight. All right, first on the agenda is the approval. You'll have a motion.
Motion to approve the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tucker. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Goins. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next, the approval of March 17th regular meeting minutes, March 25th budget session meeting minutes, and April 1st budget session minute. We'll have a motion.
Motion to a free shot.
Motion by Commissioner Hyatt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Goins. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's happened. All right, next on is the consent agenda, and I'll ask County Manager Chris Knopf to explain the bullet points. We have one, two, three, four, eight of bullet points tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item is from Tax Department. This is for capital purchase and plotter mapping office. Next is the V S S annual fraud plan as required by the state to be approved by the board. Also a position reclassification in D S S. Also grant-funded positions and emergency services. These are to be approved only if the grant funding becomes available. Next, to open the county G M one hour earlier every day at 4:00 a.m. Also to, consistent with some previous actions, to inactivate a number of positions. Next item is a revocation resolution for the rail crossings kicked outside of Elkin on the M S T. Finally, budget amendment number 11 related to some health grants, insurance refunds for the sheriff's office, and parks and recreation. Next, consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chris.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
In the draft motion concerning the G M hours, it says 5:00 a.m. to 4:00 a.m. Let the record show change to be, I believe that's 5:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Is that correct?
4:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., right? 4:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Yeah, it says 5:00 to 4:00. Okay, 4:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, the, to the county manager, the E M S grant-funded positions. Those folks, is that, are those grants going to be applied for every single year? And or could this potentially become a recurring expense to the county?
Any view of that detail?
Okay. These people aren't aware of those positions could go away?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, any more questions? You'll have a motion to accept the consent agenda as read. I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hyatt. Is there any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next is the spec- special rec- recognitions. We'll go down to the front and we'll call you up and put a short term.
There we go. Yeah. Oh, that's better. How are you? Good to see you.
I wouldn't be able to have a match today.
And we're happy to recognize you on behalf of the County of Surrey, Ms. Janet Mosley. Janet has hereby presented this certificate of recognition for your incredible achievements and exceptional dedication to the sport of tennis, resulting in the North Carolina Tennis Foundation inducting you into the prestigious North Carolina Tennis Hall of Fame. Your dedication and passion for tennis not only brings honor and recognition to your county and state, but also serves as an inspiration for all current and aspiring athletes and fans of the sport. Presented this seventh day, April 2025, by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Mark Marion Chair, Bill Goins Vice Chair, Eddie Harris, Melissa Hight, and Van Tucker. Congratulations, Janet. Yep, and you can, you can stay up here and give your speech here if you'd like. Okay, this, this is a very special one for me, Ms. Phyllis Hinson. This is a certificate of recognition from the County of Surrey to Ms. Phyllis Hinson. As everybody knows, Phyllis is a legend in Elkin City Schools. She's been here in service for thirty-some years? Fifty? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, fifty. And, and so, and, and so, this is a big deal. And I'm, I'm sure that she's had an impact on the lives of so many of the staff and students going back to the 1974, 75 school year. And, but it's, this is a recognition that we're proud to give to Ms. Phyllis Hinson. Phyllis has hereby presented this certificate of recognition for your dedication and service to Elkin City Schools and Elkin Elementary School since the 1974, 75 school year, the same year the school building opened. Surrey County honors and celebrates your 50 years of dedication that you have provided to the students, families, staff, and community. Your passion and commitment to Elkin City Schools will be recognized for many years to come. The seventh day of April 2025, by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Mark Marion, Bill Goins, Eddie Harris, Melissa Hight, and Van Tucker. Phyllis, congratulations. Steve, would you like to make any comments, Dr. Hall?
Yes. I went over to invite her to come tonight, and she looked at me like I was crazy. That's just Ms. Phyllis. She said, are you gonna do something stupid? I said, no, ma'am. I just need you to come, please. So, so happy that she did show up this evening. You never know with Ms. Phyllis. But since day one, that when I came to Elkin City Schools, Ms. Phyllis, she gives it and she takes it as well. And I love that. And we have a good rapport with each other, and she's a big softie, in case anybody was wondering. She loves those kids and she loves the people in, in that building. And she takes care of everybody behind the scenes. We thank you for your service. Fifty years, wow. It's amazing. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Pretty ironic that I'm gonna give out these next awards since I barely got out of school. But these next ones are for the Surrey Early College Quiz Bowl Team. And come on up, Mr. White. Which one's the coaches? Okay. Well, you's over it. Okay, okay. Drew Scott.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. He raised a smart one, too. I don't know what happened to him, but. All right, Miss County of Surrey, Mr. Drew Scott, Surrey Early College Quiz Bowl Team is hereby presented this certificate of recognition for your leadership contributing to the Surrey Early College Quiz Bowl Team, earning first place in the Northwestern Regional Library System Quiz Bowl Competition. Your team has not only worked hard to achieve success, but also in developing lasting bonds. Presented this the seventh day of April 2025 by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Mark Marion, Bill Goins, Eddie Harris, Melissa Hight, and Van Tucker. Eric Collins. Drew Edwards. We said most of them. Okay. Gladys. Estudio. Hey, that's close. Come on, I won't bite. County of Surrey, Gladys Estudio. Surrey Early College Quiz Bowl Team is hereby presented this certificate of recognition for your contribution to the Surrey Early College Quiz Bowl Team, earning first place in the Northwestern Regional Library System Quiz Bowl Competition. Your team of talented classmates not only worked hard to achieve success, but also developing lasting bonds. Presented this the seventh day of April 2025 by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Mark Marion, Bill Goins, Eddie Harris, Melissa Hight, and Van Tucker. Congratulations, gentlemen. Grayson Chilton. He looks a whole lot smarter now. Good job, buddy. Grace, the County of Surrey, Surrey Early College Quiz Bowl Team is hereby presented this certificate of recognition for your contribution to the Surrey Early College Quiz Bowl Team, earning first place in the Northwestern Regional Library System Quiz Bowl Competition. Your team of talented classmates have not only worked hard to achieve success, but also developing lasting bonds. Presented this the seventh day of April 2025 by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Mark Marion, Bill Goins, Eddie Harris, Van Tucker, and Melissa Hight. Congratulations. Lucas White. Congratulations. The County of Surrey, Lucas White, our Surrey Early College Quiz Bowl Team is hereby presented this certificate of recognition for your contribution to the Surrey Early College Quiz Bowl Team, earning first place in the Northwest, Northwestern Regional Library System Quiz Bowl Competition. Your team of talented classmates have not only worked hard to achieve success, but also developing lasting bonds. Presented this the seventh day of April 2025 by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Mark Marion, Bill Goins, Eddie Harris, Melissa Hight, and Van Tucker. Last but not least, we have the team captain, Ben Sane. Oh, buddy, congratulations. The County of Surrey, Ben Sane, team captain. Surrey Early College Quiz Bowl Team is hereby presented this certificate of recognition for your contribution to the Surrey Early College Quiz Bowl Team, earning first place in the Northwestern Region, Regional Library System Quiz Bowl Competition. Your team of talented classmates have not only worked hard to achieve success, but also developing lasting bonds. Presented this the seventh day of April 2025 by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners, Mark Marion, Bill Goins, Eddie Harris, Melissa Hight, and Van Tucker. All right. You were, you were perfect on your quiz. Congratulations. I got a quiz for you right now. Don't look at your papers. What's our five's names?
Melissa Hight. Mark Marion. What's your name?
Good job. Congratulations.
Yeah, I was gonna bring you up here. I just want to tell you guys that these guys have won four different regional competitions first place in the past year's time. So it's super impressive. These guys are awesome. So they just earned.
So, I guess you can hear me. So our Quiz Bowl Team was started three years ago, and we're now getting like up there with like the top teams in North Carolina. Yeah, I don't know how that happened. But we did it, I guess. Yeah.
Congratulations, everyone. Keep it up. How many did you say you had? Six?
Uh, yeah, six.
Okay, next year we'll have twelve, okay? Good job. And I missed, missed some mortgage folks who need to be recognized here tonight. That plays an important role right here in Elkin. Jennifer Klein Hexel. Stand up, please. Be recognized. There you go, Wayne. There you go. Susan Baker. And Earl Blackburn. Members of the Elkin School Board. All right, we're gonna recess our regular meeting and convene and convene the Northern Hospital District Meeting. I will now turn this over to Commissioner Bill Goins, the board's representative to the hospital board.
We'll call this Northern Hospital District of Surrey Meeting to Order. And first thing is I need approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Marion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tucker. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Dan, you want? Raise your microphone.
You talk.
Y'all hear me okay now?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, pleasure to be with you this evening. We are here because you're sitting as the Hospital District Board, Northern Regional Hospital. And the reason this is the case is that the hospital was established according to North Carolina general statutes, which provides that the board, county commissioners of the county in which a hospital district is located, shall be the governing body of the district. And what we're here tonight for your consideration is that there have been bond amendments with one of our, with our major creditors, Siemens, the hospital's major creditor. And we have come to resolution through discussions with Siemens over a period of time. We're gonna be asking this board to look at these amendments and approve them if it is your will. I have with me co-counsel Paul Billen. Wumble Bond is our bond specialist and expert. And Tom Walter, he's been my colleague in negotiations with Siemens over time. So at this time, the desk, there'd be a motion to go into closed session for consultation with legal counsel.
I have a motion to go in a closed session.
Motion to go into closed session, motion session for the Northern Hospital District for legal counsel.
Motion by Commissioner Tucker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Marion. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. We'll be back.
We will return with little turn. We will return with a little turn.
We're back in open session. I'll call Paul Bilo if he would come and explain this resolution.
Thank you all for having me here this evening. Delighted to be with you. As you all know, I'm the bond attorney for the county and for the hospital district and have worked with the county and the district for many years. In 2021, your board, as the governing body of the district, adopted a series resolution that authorized the issuance of some series 2021 bonds. And those bonds were privately placed with Siemens Public, Inc. And in this series resolution, there's also some 2017 bonds that are outstanding and they're secured by this master bond order. But this series resolution had some specific covenants and provisions that related specifically to the 2021 bonds that Siemens had requested at the time of the issuance of the bonds that were directly related to their agreement to buy the bonds. And there were certain financial covenants in those documents. Over the past couple of years, not surprising everybody, and I've seen this, and I think a lot of you have seen this, rural hospitals have struggled a little bit, COVID exasperation. Rural hospitals have struggled a little bit. COVID exasperated that a lot. Expenses during COVID went up dramatically. Revenues were challenged. So there were some financial covenants that were not being met, which has caused Siemens to come to the table and ask for certain amendments and modifications in order to waive noncompliance returns of these financial covenants. So we have been working with some other attorneys, Tom Waldrop, Dan Barrett, in negotiating with Siemens over the past couple of months. Basically, in exchange for them waiving these financial covenants, we would agree to certain modifications to that 2021 series resolution that was adopted back when the bonds were issued. A lot of these things are positive. A lot of it is them giving us some relief on if we prepay the debt by March 31 of 26. They've waived a 3% prepayment penalty. They've also given us some leniency on some of our financial covenants that we had entered into originally. So there's a lot of positives. In addition, though, what they have asked for is the main things in this supplemental series resolution, which we call supplemental series resolution number one, is they've asked for a one-year debt service reserve fund as security. So if the hospital doesn't make a regularly scheduled debt service payment, they can draw on this debt service reserve fund to make debt service payments. There is also a basically what we're calling a pledge fund. The district, actually the foundation that supports the district, is getting $15 million of state grant funds. We've agreed to put 7.3 million of those 15 million into a pledge fund. That's really just a reserve. If there was ever an event of default and the bonds did not get paid, that could be drawn on. So that's just not expected to be drawn on, but will just sit in reserve. And once the bonds get paid or all these conditions are met, then that would be released to be used for whatever purposes the district wanted to. So I think in your package, you've all been shared a copy of this supplemental series resolution number one. And the sole, in terms of the district action this evening, what we're asking is for an amendment or the adoption of, and I'll just read the title, "Resolution Supplementing and Amending That Certain Series Resolution Adopted on September 7, 2021, Authorizing the Sale of Issuance of $19,307 Northern Hospital District of Surrey County Healthcare Facilities Revenue Bond Series 2021, and Authorizing and Approving the Execution and Delivery of Various Documents Related There, Too." There is a waiver and modification agreement that goes along with this that reflects the waiver of those financial covenant violations and in turn basically sets forth the modifications that we are making in this document this evening. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
It's a pleasure. Daniel, you'll make a motion?
I'll make a motion that, as Mr. Paul Bilo Bond counsel has described, to adopt the supplement series resolution number one, which is the supplemental series resolution that would be supplemented and amending a series resolution that was previously adopted in September 2021. So that's to adopt supplement series resolution number one, and I will make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I will second that motion. Any discussion? Hearing none, take a vote. All in favor, please say aye. And aye is happy. All right. We will adjourn the Northern Hospital District. Oh, motion to adjourn, excuse me.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Marion, second by Commissioner Tucker. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. And aye is happy.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate you being here tonight. All right, we will now reconvene meeting of the Surrey County Board of Commissioners. First up, that's Laura Neely, Finance Officer. Open forum, Lord have mercy. We haven't even had that yet. Okay, let's go to open forum then. All right, if you have anything to say tonight, you have three minutes. Come up and give us your name and telephone number. And you can say just about anything you want to accord and obtain it to the county. Have any takers tonight?
I'll be the first, Mr. Chairman, board members. Mrs. Hyde, I'm especially glad that you're here to help keep these four guys in line because I know I know all of them pretty well and they need a lot of help, so I'm glad you're here. We will fast for you tonight so that you'll have extra strength. Seriously, board members, I have watched online live streaming many board meetings and I'm amazed at the stuff that you do. I want to commend you and thank you tonight. And especially in the last few weeks, as you've had these budgetary meetings, I've watched those. And I had an idea of how much work you as commissioners do. But all of a sudden, it just broke in on me. There's so much that you do behind the scenes. No one recognizes. It's unnoticed and I for one appreciate it. And I thank you that you have kept the taxes down in our county. And I have been asked and authorized by the Elkin City Schools Board of Education to especially thank you. The chairperson is here and I was authorized to especially thank you for how that you have helped Elkin City Schools in so many ways. More ways than we can even begin to count. We appreciate your conscientiousness. We welcome you to the metropolitan area of Elkin. Population 4,088, according to the last census, give or take 15 or 20. And so we thank you for coming. We thank you for all of the work, not just what we see publicly, but what we see behind or what we know goes on behind the scenes. Especially, I know that you get calls in the middle of the night, you get calls in the morning. These are unheralded. And so I'm thankful that we have a board of commissioners such as you. And I commend you for what you do for the county and especially what you've done for Elkin City. Thank you, one and all.
Thank you.
Oh, I forgot. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Marion, there's a rumor out here on the streets that you owe me some money.
You owe me to talk about that?
Well, I mean, that's up to you. It pertains to a personal bet that was made.
And you lost.
No, you won and I was supposed to get a little kickback from it and I haven't received my money yet. And so, Mr. Chairman, I'll be expecting my money sometime this week, okay? Thank you.
Jigsaw in the mail. Anyone else? All right, if not, I'll close the open forum. And now, Ms. Laura Neely, Surrey County Finance Officer, surplus property. Welcome tonight.
Thank you. Tonight, I am presenting the final offer, final bid on the surplus property we have at Ward's Gap Road. And first, I'll give you a little history of this final bid. On January 15th, adjoining property owner Mr. Pratt submitted a written offer of $5,000 for the property at Ward's Gap. On February 15th, the board voted to approve the initial bid and begin the upset bid process. On March 12th, a public notice was placed in the Mount Airy News announcing the upset bid. And on March 22nd at 5:00 PM, the 10-day period closed with no additional bids. So the highest offer remains at $5,000 from adjoining landowner Mr. Dan Pratt. And as a reminder, the assessed value on the parcel is $9,100.
Laura, I think we discussed it the last time we took this up. There is no other right of way going into this land?
There is no official right of way.
Mr. Pratt owns all of the surrounding land in that 3.5 acre parcel outside of this property in question. Is that correct?
Is that correct? I believe so. Or is, I think he's the landowner of that.
Where does, where does he join?
1699.
1699, okay, so he's one of the...
179, but one of those houses.
He's one of the houses off of Cross Creek Road.
I see, understood.
He's about his rate, not the 4.5 acre.
It's the 3.5.
Oh, the parcel in the middle is not included.
I love, I'll make a motion, we accept the $5,000 offer. Property. You'll have a second.
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Goins. Is there any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Most are carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. All right, Ms. Joan Serree, Northwest Regional Library, Rodberry. It's your turn now.
My name is so fancy. I don't know who that is. Say however you want. It's good to see all of you. I know you all have been very busy tonight and we really just want to take the opportunity to thank you while you're in Elkin. Again, you know, the Elkin Library is just right down the hill over there on the creek and the regional office is upstairs there. It's been there for 65 years and we appreciate all the support over the many years for it. We thank you for recognizing the Quiz Bowl kids. That means a lot to them and they are certainly outstanding kids. Looking forward to the state finals on Saturday at Mount Airy High School, too. And I know it meant a lot to be able to come, so thank you so much for doing that. We're looking forward to seeing if they win. I do want to just recognize some folks here. The Elkin friends, we all know it's great to have friends, had wanted to come, too. And the Elkin friends are a great group of people. You all know, friends of any group are important. Lee Villiers is here. She's the chair. And the other ladies that are in purple, it's because they like purple, are here, too. So again, we appreciate all that you do. I do want to introduce Abby Walker to come up. Abby Walker is the new branch manager at the Elkin Library. Martha Smith retired after years and did a marvelous job. But we're so glad to have Abby on board. Her enthusiasm and her fresh ideas are just great and we're all working together. And Martha said she's not too far away, so if we have questions, we can still ask her, which is really, really good of her. So Abby, do you want to say a few words?
I just wanted to thank you all for having us. I want to thank you for being in our town. And just thank you for the support of the library over the many years and thank you for the continued support. Our libraries matter and our community matters and they go hand in hand, so thank you very much.
Once when you have time, and especially Mr. Harris, I don't know whether you know, her father has been working on the iron ore that is found below the creek and found out, and I want to make sure I get this right, there is documentation that's gone to Raleigh, to the state historical place, that there's actually a skirmish, Revolutionary War skirmish where the Elkin Library is and it's been documented. So that's pretty exciting to find out another chapter. And I know she can fill you in a little bit more if you don't already know, so that is pretty exciting. Just want to tell you, happy National Library Week. It is Library Week. We appreciate all the support that you give to all the libraries in Surrey County. It's such a fine county and we do support the libraries. They mean so much to all the communities. You have a little brochure there that has just updated services the libraries are offering. As you all know, the libraries continue to change and evolve as communities change and evolve and we try to respond and be up to date and to make the very, very, very best use of taxpayers' money because we're all taxpayers, too, and we know how important it is. We are having this week a writers' roadshow throughout the whole region of Allegheny, Surrey, Stokes and Yack and have events with writers all week long. We had started out in Pages yesterday. It was a lot of fun and going to end up at Pages again. And then today was in Danbury. The Stokes Arts Council helped sponsor a writers' workshop and they tonight had a writers' program, too, at the Arts Place in Danbury. So it's really nice and it's great to see people coming out, a lot of readers talking to writers. And, you know, we're really glad to be able to help connect people there, too. So if you can come, please do. There's going to be one at Sanders Ridge in Yacken County a little bit later in the week. The author there, Dale Neal, is a North Carolinian from Winston-Salem, lives in Asheville and has written a real interesting book called The Kings of Coitsey that takes, has historical North Carolina and current and also future. Characters really jump off the page. We do appreciate your past support. We know this is a tight year for budgets. It is with everyone. Again, I talked to Chris earlier and our request, and I hope maybe you've seen it, is really to support our staff because it's the staff, as you all know, that make this all possible. And I know you all have many hard decisions to make. We appreciate your past support. Hope you'll keep them in mind. And we do appreciate what you do and your continued support, so thank you very much. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate to let us know. We're here to answer questions or to provide services for all the communities. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for everything. Thank you all for what you do. All right, next up, Nathan Webb, Mountain Rescue Squad. What's your request? Came a long way, Nathan. Lost the camp. Welcome.
Thank you. It feels like a long way, but I live on prison camp, which is still in our district, so it wasn't too bad. First of all, I'd like to thank y'all for having me this evening. Mr. County Manager, Mr. Chairman and Board of Commissioners, I appreciate y'all's time and making room for me on the agenda. So I'm here on behalf of Mountain Rescue Squad. I know most of you, but my name is Nathan Webb. I'm the chief of the squad for three more months. I'm stepping down at the end of this year, our fiscal year, so 10 years is long enough. Right now, I just kind of want to give you guys an idea. I believe you have the packet in front of you that I presented. I have one correction to make to that towards the end, but I kind of want to give, let you guys know what we do and why we're asking for the funds that we're asking for. Currently, we're comprised of 29 members. We're chartered with the state of North Carolina to have up to 40. If anybody's interested in submitting an application, you can go online and do that. But we provide heavy rescue services and medical response coverage to 177 square mile district, which is a third of the county. Aside from the Surrey County Sheriff's Office and EMS, it's the largest public safety district in our county. We're the only heavy rescue provider in our district, with the other heavy rescue provider in the county being Elkin Rescue Squad, which makes us a countywide resource as well as some of the surrounding Virginia counties. Collectively, last year, our members logged 7,484 hours in 911 calls, community service, meetings, trainings and work details. We're paged more 911 calls than any other volunteer agency in Surrey County and we are only surpassed by local law enforcement agencies and Surrey County EMS, which I would be remiss if I didn't say we're all full-time paid agencies. On the third page there, you have some statistics and it just, call volume for our department. Our department this past year for actual 911 calls, you'll see there in the second block, was 1,933 for a total collective calls of 2,091 when you figure in community services, meetings, trainings and events like that. And you can look through those and see that the only places we were surpassed were by full-time paid agencies. So in 2024, we were paged at 2,091 calls and additional 216 of those events were comprised of community services, meetings, trainings and those things that I mentioned in the past. 24 of those were ambulance transports. 110 were sport protocol fire EMS standbys. And what the difference between protocol and EMS standby, protocol standby is when a sister rescue squad on an active rescue. We cover their district in that event. And then EMS standbys is when the county is out of ALS units. We cover that, our district for ambulance transport. Our average daily calls right now is 5.7 calls a day, which is a lot for 29 volunteers to respond to. Of the 2,090 calls, we responded to 1,166 for a total of 58, 55.8%. That sounds like a lot of calls went unanswered, but a lot of those calls were assist to patients where someone's just needing help up out of the floor and EMS was going to that call as well. Our true emergencies where our personnel were needed for rescues or CPRs or things like that, those calls did not go unanswered. The fourth page there, you can just kind of see our peak call hours. I broke that down in a bar graph there for you and it just kind of helps us understand where we allocate resources during the time of day. What we're requesting is $27,500 in additional funding on top of what we already receive from you guys as our annual allotment through the Surrey County Association of Rescue Squads. This would allow us to have four part-time paid staff. This would allow us to have four part-time paid staff, which is one person per day during peak hours. This is based off a 40-hour work week and you can kind of see the breakdown there of what we're expecting to pay per hour and how many paid hours we would be looking at. 55,000 is our total budget for the program, for a paid program and that covers our CPA fees, that covers our taxes, FICA, et cetera, as well as our increase in our workman's compensation insurance, which will be significant going from volunteer to paid personnel. Our request for services is steadily increasing annually, we see drop-offs from month to month, but as, as a whole, every annual budget that comes around that we look at our call response, we're continually going up in our requests for 911 calls especially. All of our volunteers work full-time jobs to provide for their families, but still find enough time to dedicate hundreds and even thousands of hours annually in service to our community. Adding paid personnel would help ease the burden on volunteers and more importantly, ensure rescue response to the ill and injured in our community. I know our SCARS president came and spoke with you guys, Mr. Austin Love, a couple of weeks ago. And he highlighted some of the facts of the rescue squad, such as that we are not a non-tax, or we are a non-tax based system, as you guys know, 501(c)(3) nonprofit. So you guys have helped us out tremendously in the past, providing most of the budget that we get. The other part of our budget comes from Melissa Knows, United Fund of Surrey, as well as the city of Mount Airy. The city of Mount Airy has committed to funding half of our paid program this year at 27,500. So that's why I'm coming to you guys and asking for the additional 27,500, that was submitted through Neighborly. And I think Mr. Knopf may have any more information on that for you guys, I submitted a letter with that as well for you guys to read at your leisure. But I just ask that you seriously please consider our request as not just a monetary expenditure, but an investment in the health and safety for the citizens and visitors of Surrey County. And I would absolutely love to answer any questions you guys may have. And sorry I couldn't be here at some of the earlier meetings during the budgetary time, but I work nights and this is one of my few nights off. So this is the time that me and Chris could get together and get us in here, so.
Nathan, you along with the other rescue squads recently received a grant from the North Carolina Community Foundation.
Yes ma'am.
For $15,000, can you tell us where you plan to put that in your budget this year?
Absolutely, so as you well know, Hurricane Helene did a number on the western part of the state. We was deployed, we had five different deployments to the western part of the state, Ash County in specific, and we incurred a lot of damage to some of our equipment during that. One rescue tool, our ATV was damaged and in the same day heading home on 4/21, our trailer that carries our ATV, the axle broke. So it was quite a bit of damage just in one day. We have since got that damage fixed and are seeking reimbursement funds from FEMA. However, we are planning to hopefully use that money to go towards the objective of replacing our aging ATV. It's a 2001 model, so it's several years, I'm sorry, 2002 model. So it's several years old at this point, over two decades old. We were one of the first, we were the first department in the county to get an ATV and people thought we were crazy then and now everybody has one because it's become a staple and necessity. But it's showing some age, we need to look into getting it replaced, so that is our intention. That, that grant, the funds were for hurricane or storm preparedness and recuperation from Hurricane Helene expenses. So that is where we plan on using that. But me and Darren Lewis worked closely together and then I worked with the other chiefs trying to see what everybody needed and as far as equipment and replenishment from the storms. Welcome. And guys, I know the fire departments have been up here to talk to you several times. I have, I know I've told Melissa on the phone and I've told Bill that I, I don't want to step on any other department to get what we need. But I would be remiss if I didn't say that two of the fire departments in our district nearly triple our budget. They're large fire departments, but they don't have near the service area we have, they have less than half the call volume that we have. And I know that's a tax base versus non-tax base, that's something hard to get around, we've worked on that as a association. But you know, it's, it's hard for, we've become experts at writing grants and finding funds where we didn't think we could find funds. Just in my last 10 years of chief, I have wrote six grants and totaling over $300,000 that we've received in the last 10 years, which has been great and it's helped us out a lot. But to do a program like this, we have just not been able to find any other avenues. We have looked for FEMA grants and state grants, different things we can find and we've not been able to find any other avenues to fund a part-time paid person. And we feel that it's 100% necessary for our department and our community going forward.
You've been there 10 years, you are at 29 volunteers now, where were you at 10 years ago?
Right at 29, we've, we've hovered around 30 for several years now. You know, we lose a few and gain a few every year, but we've hovered at 30 for quite a while.
And you know, we, we've done, we've just completed the, the fire study and, and you guys were part of that as well. And I guess, you know, looking down, look, you know, if we had a crystal ball, it'd be nice to have, but that's not going to get better. The volunteer piece of this is not going to get better.
Correct.
And we see fire departments, you know, going into, into rescue. Do you ever see this being, you blend, you might blend in with, with fire, this might be a blended, we call it component in, in government, but seeing these things blended, like a rescue squad blended in with, with, with the fire service.
That's a tricky question, the national model is fire, rescue EMS, all blended together. That's the national model that most of your metropolitan areas have moved to, especially like Charlotte, Raleigh, Wake County. Salem, places like that, even Winston-Salem still has EMS and fire separate. But as far as our area here in Surrey County, our five rescue squads have the equipment and have the apparatus and have the trained people that the fire departments are moving towards getting, we already have those resources in place, we already have those people in place. We honestly just need help getting it to the scene quicker than what we are able to, especially during business hours, because that's when most of our people are working. If I'd been asked that question even 10 years ago, I would have thought that the rescue squads would have been gone by now. But I have got a lot of insights since being chief for the last 10 years and then five years assistant chief before that. And the financial aspect of moving that from a fire rescue separate services to a fire rescue combined services is astronomical. And I don't believe that the county would be able to afford that in a one or up to 10-year budget cycle. It would be quite a significant merge for that to happen. Then as well, do you lose volunteers merging into that cycle? Now, do you have people that want to do exclusive fire, exclusive rescue and then you lose those people merging into a model like that? I don't know, but there's a, there's a lot of tricky questions to be answered there, but I could see that in the future, being a viable model. But right now, you know, we've been around since 1961, we're celebrating our 65th anniversary soon. So I, I see that the rescue squad, you know, even before EMS, Mount Airy Rescue Squad was the transport service and Elkin Rescue Squad. They were funded, founded even 20 years before us in 1941, they're the second oldest rescue squad in the whole state of North Carolina. So we've been around for a long time, been doing this for a long time, we're just, you know, requesting a little bit of help right now to continue doing that and providing the same services and level that we provide.
A couple of questions, first of all, thank you Nathan, Mr. Webb for all that you do in the Mount Airy Rescue Squad, but just a couple of questions from members from the last time you presented. Those two fire departments you referred to that you do mutual aid with most often, I guess that would be Franklin and Banner Town.
Yes, sir.
And tell me again, what percentage of your calls are within the city limits, district, the city limits of the town of Mount Airy?
Absolutely, so that's in my letter that I gave you guys as well, but 11 square miles is the city limits of Mount Airy and around 80% of our call volume is within the city limits. And that is mostly medical calls, we provide first response for medical calls in the city limits, then outside this, and rescue as well in the city. And then outside the city limits, we provide rescue calls. So those are going to be our accidents, our industrial accidents, our, obviously car accidents, high angle rescues, confined space, trench, things like that. All of those are provided outside. And then if there is a fire department that has first response that is unable to go to a medical call, we will be paged a second in if they don't have a response within the county. But roughly 20% of our call volume is within the county and 80% within the city for those medical calls.
And those medical calls in the city limits, I'm just curious because we deal with several departments here, but would that be convalescent mutual aid? Are you usually the first and only one on the scene, does EMS of Surrey County generally show up too with those same calls?
It depends on the call type, usually on all of those, Surrey County EMS will be there as they will be the ones transporting the patient. Depending on the call type, it may be us exclusively with EMS or it may be us and Mount Airy Fire. The bulk majority of those are us and Mount Airy Fire going as first responders. And that seems like a lot and seems like overkill, but when you get into CPRs and things like that, it takes several people when you're swapping out compressors every two minutes and things like that.
And I'm not picking on here, but I'm just curious, I'm trying to learn, on those typical calls where you do mutual aid with Surrey County EMS within the city limits, let's just say, or that would be a good, that would be a good part of your calls.
Yes, sir.
Are you, with 29 volunteers, are you typically like first on the scene or probably half the time first on the scene? Or is EM, are you usually there after the Surrey County EMS on a medical call? I'm just curious.
It honestly depends on whether we have someone at the station or not or in town at the time, several of our members do live in the county, we have a few that live in the city. But I, I don't have those numbers right in front of me, but I would say it's probably 50/50 that we're there first with Mount Airy Fire or that we're there second after EMS. That's just give or take, if we have members at the station, usually we're there first, but it, it's just really hard to say.
Yeah, I was just curious, were you limited, you know, 29 men, how many, how many calls you were able to get there as first responders or the first one to be the first responder? Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Webb.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Any more, any more questions? Appreciate you coming and thank you for what you do. Mr. Knopf.
I don't have to close, want to close, we have a request to close for economic development and legal.
General County Business, I'll start with Commissioner Hyatt.
I have no comments, no.
Mr. Hyatt.
Want to thank Elkin City School, Board Members, Miss Klein, Hexel, Blackburn, Susan Baker. Thank you all very much and Haley and. The momentum. Oh, Jill Belia. And for the invitation over here, I always enjoy coming to Elkin and look forward to working with you folks on this year's county budget.
Mr. Tucker.
I gotta echo that, it's always good to come as your guest here at your beautiful facility at Elkin High School. And we certainly appreciate the attendance of your board members, all of you there, glad to have you. And I usually joke that where I live, it takes us, you need a helicopter to get over here. And I really did tonight, some of the rain that came through, but, and some of the curves, but it's always worth it and wonderful meal, we appreciate that. And appreciate you having us and look forward to coming again, thank you very much.
Mr. Goins.
Yeah, thank the folks at Elkin City Schools for hosting us tonight. Thanks to folks from the Northwest Regional Library, we're always glad to see you and appreciate all you do. Nathan, appreciate what the Rescue Squad does and all of our Rescue Squads and our fire departments, appreciate all those and the things that they do for us each and every day that go unnoticed. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, once again, I'd like to thank Elkin, Elkin High School and everyone associated with Elkin City Schools. Been a pleasure and I don't know, I can't remember whether I plugged mazini's a while ago, but thank them for supplying the food. Thank you all for coming out tonight, I've got a couple here. Friday, we had a get together at the Historic Courthouse in Dobson, we rang out child abuse. Several schools attended, we had, we had a whole, whole yard full of folks. And a minute of ringing that bell represented a kid going through child abuse. So we had a good, good turnout and two, two young ladies from Pilot Mountain Middle spoke about their friend they lost at Pilot Mountain. So good, good turnout. And then Saturday, I went to Fisher River Park, Easter Egg Hut, Surrey County Parks and Rec, over 600 people down there. So a great turnout from that and.
Friday, this Friday, Special Olympics.
This Friday, Special Olympics, it's, it's up in the air right now, we got a letter, note from Daniel White. Could be some changes made to it, we'll see Wednesday morning, but they're calling for rain and cold weather Friday. So be alert for emails and whatever, because that's, that's my most favorite day of the year. I always have a wonderful time. Mr. Sheriff, thank you for coming tonight and all you ladies, what you do and, and thank you. Recent years, we, we've really learned that the libraries are a whole lot more than just sitting and reading a book. Thank you very much. All right, we have a motion to go into close.
Motion, Mr. Chairman, to go into closed session.
Motion by Commissioner Tucker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Goins, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, well, back in session, do I have the motion closed?
Most of the term is chairman.